Might not be the best word, but people are active, yeah. Um, I'm playing tennis right now, so. I'm sorry if I'm a little woozy, we have to wake up at four thirty to get to, well, I do, because I have to drive, fifteen, twenty minutes, but we practice at five thirty.
At the mat?
So, that's good stuff. Um, but that's, it's necessary, so we get enough court time early season.
So who was out there this afternoon?
We were, it alternates between the boys and the girls.
Oh, okay, got it.
Yeah. Um, but aside from that, it sounds, it sounds like everyone's sports is going up well. Um, I only know about my, my grades, course selection, we've had guidance come in and talk to us. I think since the last meeting that I was at, they had us, they came in and talked to us about next year and trying to plan for next year and then beyond. Um, but I'm pretty sure that they've checked in with the freshmen and sophomore U blocks and then I'm not, or classes. I'm not sure if they've done the eighth grade, I think Ms. Low asks some of the mentors to come and help.
I think they're in the process of.
So that'll, that'll happen soon. So other than that, not, not too much to report, I don't know if any of you have specific questions.
Any scoop on the freshman sophomore dance, did you hear anything about that?
I did not, I was.
I know Miss Levesley was there, she knows.
I was gonna ask you if you danced.
Um, although other chaperones did dance, I did not. Um, but no, I think it was a really great time. Um, the kids were on the dance floor the entire night, they would run out to get fresh air and then another song would come on, they'd go, hey, that song's awesome! And they would run back in, um, so it was really a nice night for them.
Good, good turnout too, right?
Um, fantastic turnout, about a hundred and twenty students.
That's awesome.
It was more dominated by female students, some male students, but you know what? Every person that was there had a fantastic time, and that's all that matters.
Good.
Yeah.
Are dances still relevant, or is it?
I think it depends on the type. Um, I think semi and prom are really important for a lot of people, everyone loves going, I think prom more so, but just as, as it goes along. Um, I think that, we had talked, I'm the secretary for our, my class, so we had talked about trying to set up some sort of, sort of like homecoming dance for, for the school, but it, it's a lot of planning that we just don't have time for, so, um, I know that a lot of kids um, in my grade and the sophomore grade have talked about that they hate that we don't have some form of a homecoming dance. We used to have, I believe we used to have one, right? I don't know how long ago that was, but, um, since that's gone away, we don't really have any like big dance or events in, in the fall. And so I think kids, by the time spring comes around, they're like, ah, not even worth it. Um, yeah, I remember, I, I had Ms. Epp last year who, uh, pretty much just convinced our entire class, like, what else are you gonna do? You're gonna be sitting at home doing nothing, might as well go have fun in the dance, so. I don't know, I went to both semis last year and I thought they were great, um, it was, they were, they were fun and I'm excited for prom. We actually were going to book the prom for next year this weekend.
Oh, good, where?
Should be fun, uh, the Andover Club.
Nice.
Should be, yeah, should be fun.
Tried and true.
Do you ever think about the gym? No, no, seriously.
I have, I have thought about, I've thought about it.
It's just, you know, that's when, the old days, the old Yankee, um, proms used to be in the gym.
I think part of it might be.
It's fine.
Did you have proms in the gym?
We had proms in the gym, yeah.
So did we.
So did we.
But that was a hundred years ago.
We did not.
We did.
We didn't have proms, but we had dances every month.
Yeah, it's just, it's less expensive, it's, um, there's a lot of wasted money.
It is, yeah, that, that is very true. I think the dances that I went to in middle school were all held in the cafeteria and that was a lot less, yeah, that was a lot less fun. I think the gym is a good place, the speakers in there are monstrous and they can really get some sounds going, so. I, I definitely think that people would be open to it, I think there's a stigma just about like coming to school for a dance.
Coming back to school for something special and important.
Just, I, I, like, we, yeah, we don't have anything else that's like that during the school year, so I think that that makes it a little bit more, a little different. Um, but yeah, other than that, I think it, it would be a good idea, um, planning it for the gym. I, I think just in general, trying to plan some form, it doesn't even.
It'd be like a soccer. Or you could use like a feed barn, like in that movie. That Kevin Bacon.
Footloose.
Footloose, right.
Where's this year's prom?
This year's prom is at the Lennox Center, um, the venue of my marriage.
Oh.
Uh, the Lennox Center on.
I'm on a disswitch.
Home of the Greek picnic.
Yeah.
Yep.
Home of the Greek picnic.
Uh, yes.
I actually like that.
It's good, it's very good.
Yep, so Spencer, you're trying to get, I didn't get the, so you're trying to get a homecoming dance?
Um, I'm not trying, right?
I mean, not you specifically, but there's movement of foot.
So, at the beginning, at the beginning of this year, our class officers, we discussed trying to host a, a, a homecoming dance. I mean, for us, it was primarily because we knew we could get kids to go and then, and wrapping all that, but we also, a lot of people have come up to us and asked, like, why don't we do a semi, or why don't we do like some form of a dance during homecoming? Because a lot of schools do.
Yeah.
Um, and I think that that's another addition to like after the football game and all that, so, um, I'm not saying it would be a bad idea.
I loved homecoming.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, it's kind of the, the cherry on the top of the whole week.
I'll DJ it for you. Much to my kid's chagrin.
So that's to be determined.
And Zac Brown.
Yeah.
Well, I'm hearing you say there's interest, but then there isn't always enough follow-through interest to actually get it off the ground.
Yeah, for us, we just didn't have, we were trying to plan other things and, and get prom for next year ready, and so I think that that inhibits the ability.
Well, rather than how the, the class leaders do it, why don't you just make a small committee, like a dance committee?
Yeah, um, I think the, the council.
Student council.
Student council.
Student council.
Could definitely head something like that up, I just don't think that they've thought about doing something like that. Um, but it'd definitely be a good idea.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe this year's sophomore should think about it.
Yeah.
All right.
Any other questions? I don't know.
I do, I have one, if that's okay. Any scuttlebutt among student body on the whole college entrance?
Skandale, fraud.
Um, yeah, Dr. B was gonna spend like part of class talking about it, we never got around to it. Um, I don't know, I think it was, obviously it was just like a shock to see that the major schools had been committing stuff like that, that's big news to all of us. Um, but at the same time, we're kind of, we were, uh, my, my personal reaction is like, I wasn't really surprised. I, I think there's enough, enough affluence that people can just try and do something like that, doesn't mean they're gonna get away with it, but they can try. Um, and so I wasn't particularly surprised that they would, that somebody would try and do something, I'm just glad that they figured it out. Um, but yeah, I, I mean, I don't think anyone at the school is, is trying to, it photoshot themselves into a crew boat and say.
Or you mean our, our water polo team?
Yeah, no, really, really bigger sport.
Yeah, I, I would imagine you guys are so like deep into the weeds right now with your own stuff, that it's kind of like, all right, that's going on out there in California, New York, Greenwich, whatever, we've got our own stuff to pay attention to.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we as parents are all about it, and oh my god, but you guys are right in the thick of it.
Very true, and I know for my, myself and my fellow classmates, we have AP tests in twenty, less than twenty class periods.
Whoa.
Yeah, my French AP test is nineteen class periods away, that's my teacher loves to.
Yeah, you've got bigger fish to fry.
Yeah.
I'm gonna tab one of my report outs onto yours very quickly and just say, um, just an acknowledgement of Bev Lo and her expertise in the college admissions process. She was a go-to resource for, I'm gonna forget the journal, the Journal of Higher Ed and BUR.
W-B-U-R.
BUR.
E-B-R.
BRU is College Radio Station, yeah. Sorry. But they just, she got a lot of, I think she tweeted out or retweeted something from the Journal of Higher Ed and then they reached out to her. So, we're very lucky to have her experience and her expertise here with us, so I'm sorry, didn't mean to cut off your report, but.
No, no, that's totally fine. Yeah, Ms. Low has been a very positive driving force for me, uh, she's not even my counselor, but, um, in addition to Mr. Conwell and Mr. Polk, she, she crushes the show down there. Um, I came to her, I wanna say.
Are you gonna quote that, Gail?
She crushes the show.
Yeah, well, it's recorded, I'll, I'll get it, I'll get it in quotes.
I remember I came to her two weeks ago and, um, I took the military aptitude test on Friday. So, I come to her and I said, oh, you know, I'm thinking about taking this, what do you think? And she was like, yeah, go for it, they do some cool stuff afterwards and all that. And then I forgot to bring my permission slip and I emailed her at like two thirty on, on Wednesday and they were due at two fifteen. Said, uh, I, I'm meant to give that to you, it's in my backpack, but I just, it just kind of slipped my mind, and she was like, ah, don't worry about it, just bring it tomorrow. And I got to do it and it was, it was awesome, yeah, I was actually, I was surprised, there were five students in my grade that, uh, four students in my grade and the sophomore that came. And I had heard last year that only one student took it, or one or two, so, yeah, it was interesting.
Serious consideration from your part?
Me, um, somewhat.
An academy?
Not an academy, uh, I'm thinking more RTC, but, um, yeah, I actually remember your daughter, when she came to the, uh, what was that, the, like?
College panel?
Yeah, the college panel, um, she was talking about that and, uh, I was already kind of considered it because of, um, uh, the Boy Scouts work that I do, I already really enjoy a lot of the stuff that, that is involved in that, uh, and I know I give it up early, so.
That's what you started your, your comments with.
Yeah, um, so, when, when we had been talking about that and I, I approached, um, Abby afterwards and talked to her about what that takes and all that, and so when I saw that aptitude test was, possibly, I went for it. Um, the other big thing on Friday was the blood drive, which I was surprised, I, I donated, but I was surprised that we had a lot of turnout, there were twenty, like twenty kids that donated and then thirty, like total, that showed up, but a, a couple of kids got dismissed because they couldn't donate for some reason or another. Um, I know that.
How old do you have to be to donate?
You have to be sixteen and you have to get parent approval and then, once you're seventeen, you can choose to donate on your own. Um, yeah, I know there were quite a few people who went on the Peru trip last year, that you have to wait twelve months after you've traveled to a different country, um, to, or maybe specific countries, I'm not sure, but, um, you have to wait twelve months before you can donate again. So I think Ms. Donnelly had even talked about trying to set up another one for.
That's great, I didn't know we did that.
Was it in the parking lot?
No, it was in the gym.
It was in the gym, oh, okay.
No, they didn't.
I wasn't sure if they had like the blood mobile kind of thing, the little.
Oh, the trailer, yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that was cool.
Awesome, cool, that's great, well, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thanks, Spencer. And good luck on the AP tests.
Thank you. I'll probably see you guys before.
I'm sure you will, so you understand.
I'll just be stressing out more. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Spencer, have a good one. All right, Pam, chairman's report, no, it's me, why do I always? I'm trying to pass it back here. So I just have a quick thing to, um, comment on, I spoke with, um, my contact on the Dover Sherburne School Committee about late start, and he was the gentleman who originally contacted me in the fall to say, what are you guys doing about that, this? And this was kind of the impetus for us to have a discussion this fall. Um, and so I wanted to see kind of where they were, because they were starting the whole process and they were looking into it, um, at the beginning of this fall. They have made a lot of progress, he has done a ton of research, so I urge you all to go on the Dover Sherburne, um, uh, uh, school website, the district website, and under that, there's a tab that's late start, there is a ton of information, um, that he's posted on that. Um, and one thing in particular, in particular is a TED book, which is very interesting, so I will get that and I will forward it to everyone, I was able to watch the first like minute or so. Um, so basically where they are on the process, it sounds like they're taking a very similar tack that we took, tack to what we took with the school building committee, in terms of reaching out to all the various kind of community stakeholders and just talking to them and, and just making sure they touch and, and have a line of communication open and a little bit more education. Um, so they are making sure to have everybody at the table. Um, so, they are, let me look at my notes here, I talked to.
Can I ask you if they've done those surveys?
Yes, they've done surveys with all of those groups.
So community parents?
Yep, yep.
Is that on their page?
Um, I don't believe the surveys are, I think they're in the process of, of, you know, getting all that information together. Um, so they've done community discussions with like sixteen groups of stakeholders, so they have hit everybody. Um, they've, uh, let's see, now they are at the point where they're working on scenarios, kind of, how would this look, how would this look, how would this look? So what they're doing right now is, um, voting on it, I believe in the fall, with an implementation in the fall of two thousand twenty, to, so to really kind of have a year of a runway for everyone to, you know, get all their thoughts out and just kind of smooth everything out before they actually implement it. So they're gonna kind of chew on it for a year after it hopefully gets approved. Um, so very interesting, one thing, um, we did talk about, he mentioned, which I thought could be kind of interesting for us, um, the Middlesex League in two thousand eighteen, Pam, you probably know about this, the superintendent's letter. What they did was, um, they tried to get, I can't read my handwriting, they tried to get a commitment from each district to, um, move to about, to move to eight thirty in two thousand eighteen. And any district who didn't move will still support, um, those that didn't and honor the overall athletic schedule. Because we've talked about athletes being, athletics being a little bit of a speed bump to moving any of the, um, uh, the schedule. Um, so that was something kind of interesting, also, um, there was one other item. I'm having trouble reading my own handwriting here. Anyway, so it's a work in progress, um, I thought it was very interesting and they seemed very, um, the, the process seems very deliberate, very thoughtful, very efficient. Um, so it sounds like they are going about it the right way, not that I'm an expert, but we had success with how you guys handled our, um, school building project and it seems that they're taking that same tack, so very interesting, we just said we kind of keep each other involved, definitely interesting to learn from.
Assuming that we want to go that way.
Assuming that we want to go that way, you know, also talked about some of the, um, speed bumps that they may be hitting and some of the speed bumps that they've heard about from other, um, uh, other districts. So, an interesting conversation.
We had convened the Cape Ann Superintendent at the time that Middlesex went, at that time, there were not that many districts interested in pursuing it, so. That's, I think since then, Georgetown has actively taken on Masco, new report, so we've been less coordinated, but I don't know that anyone would not honor the schedule if somebody changed there. So I, I would think we had the regional support if we decided to make that decision.
By honoring the schedule, everybody agrees to the fact of shifting the.
Debat sports later.
Debat sports later.
Yeah.
Well, I, I don't want to go down the rabbit hole, but just for a later date.
Mm-hmm.
Do you think it would be in our best interest to kind of, if we want to keep this conversation going, that we do something like we did with the, um, elementary project where we took a, with the community survey about one versus two, to see if there's the support? And then take, instead of doing all that research, just see if there is will of the community?
Yes. Yeah, yes.
So do, like, maybe say, get a timeframe that we're gonna.
Yeah, that was.
Do a community outreach to see if they, if the public isn't pushing it.
Right, right.
I don't know, I, if you don't have that support, I don't think we're gonna get it.
So, I, I, I'm sort of, two, uh, two sides on that, I sort of think, um, you know, I'd like to hear from other districts, kind of what their experience is before we even take the next step and involve the community in any way. Um, because I feel like we should have kind of our ducks in a row in terms of going out to the community and, and know what some of the pitfalls are and be able to speak to that, rather than just kind of throw it against the wall and see what it sticks.
And when we did that survey, we used K-12 insight and we.
Yeah, it was very well thought out.
We did what you were, what you're alluding to, which is we used it as an education tool, so there were questions, but there was a lot of explanation as to, you know, what the process was, what possibilities there were, what would be considered, so it was an informed way in and not just a, are you interested in?
Right, yeah.
It's our time, so I, I think we could do a little legwork and then maybe get some help on crafting a survey.
Yeah, I'd like to see us do a little bit of legwork first. Um, because I think once you ask the question, then people take that next step and say, oh my gosh, this is what's gonna happen. So I think before we do that, we have to have a really kind of like thoughtful and deliberate way of doing it, not that we wouldn't, but.
Now it also would be good to find like how much of that moving in later opens the door for early activities to come in instead of, okay, we do practice the morning.
Yeah, 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 that kind of defeats the whole purpose, yeah, like you just said.
And I have some template documents from Newbury Port that were sent to me, including their survey, which, um, which I'm happy to share with everybody, they said, you know, do that, so.
Yeah, okay.
I haven't done it yet, just because I wanted to see where we were headed before everybody had more to read on the plate, so.
Okay, well, everyone take a look at that Dover Sherburne website, because it is chock full of information.
Yeah.
And he has done a ton of work, as I said, in talking to other districts and, you know, anything I think that we would have done, is already done.
Right.
In terms of reaching out and, and talking to districts that have already done this.
And I don't want to be a curmudgeon, I'm gonna go down the ass, but I don't, I feel like if we keep research, like we keep saying we're gonna research, I, I, I feel like we need to make a commitment one way, like, at some point, commitment one way or the other of what we're doing, because if we can just sit here and keep reading and.
Right, right.
Or not read.
I agree with you.
We need to come up with a.
So should we just draw a line in the sand and say?
Not right this moment, but at some point, I think this is an important conversation that's to have.
No, no, no. No, no, I mean, draw a line in the sand in the spring and say, in the spring, let's move forward with this, let's, let's decide in the, well, it is the spring.
Like tomorrow, yeah.
Let's say by our retreat, let's decide whether or not we're gonna move forward with it. I mean, because I think we, we have had kind of the whole year to noodle on it.
I think the survey, the community survey is a good way to decide if we're gonna move forward.
I think so too. So, maybe by our retreat, we'll craft a community survey.
But have to be more formal than all of us just reading other people's websites, I can think is what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Is that like, like the presentations we talked about or some, yeah?
Well, again, we go, we go down a rabbit hole, maybe we could pull a couple of people aside to kind of think through what the survey could look like. You could do an introduction to the survey about the pros and the cons of going in this direction and then some very targeted questions to see what the appetite is for the discussion. And I do think once you start asking the question, you'll start to hear from the folks who are concerned with changing the after-school schedule and, um, folks who want to go solely by the research and not necessarily look at all the other.
So let's kind of have a target.
So we need two people, we need two volunteers to kind of pull that, start working on that.
Not it.
Nope. We don't have to decide.
Right now?
Okay.
All right.
Let's, let's think about that too, all right, moving on, that's all I have, I think that was enough. Um, consent agenda, do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda with the minutes?
So moved.
Second, all right, any discussion here? All in favor?
All right, sorry.
All right, motion carries.
I missed the second. I missed the second.
Of Rachel, I think.
Thank you.
Um, subcommittee reports.
Oh, can I?
Yeah.
Uh, just on the consent agenda, I don't think it was technically part of it, but we did just have that issue of the, the student activity sub-account. Do you want to handle that afterwards or?
Breaking out the, uh.
Yeah, we can address that, Dan, I just want to make sure we don't lose it when it's over. Yeah.
Okay. Do we? Let's.
So the, so the issue is just.
I didn't know when it was.
So Abby, you're looking for, you're looking for a motion to allow there is a sub. You're looking for a, a motion to allow a sub-account for musicals?
I think a, uh, update to, uh, sorry, a motion to update the list of approved, uh, student activity ledger accounts to include high school music.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, abstain. Okay.
Thanks.
Motion carries with the extension note.
Do you not believe in music?
Thank you.
All right, um, Eddie and Caroline, elementary facilities report.
Got it.
Sure, so we had, um, three meetings last week, we met with the planning board, the concom, and then we had our community meeting. Um, planning board and concom, uh, went fairly well, we have, um, an idea of the things that we need to address and, um, actually came up with some ideas about ways that we can, uh, codify some of the, um, agreements that we need to make with the town of Manchester in terms of parking and routes, you know, traffic routes and things like that. The community meeting was good in terms of kind of getting a sense of where the public was with all of those things. Um, so we are going to meet and go through, develop some FAQs related to construction. And from that, I think that what we'll do is we, uh, working with the town, uh, Manchester, the Board of Selectmen to, um, come up with an agreement on kind of, so that we're all on the same page in terms of some of these, uh, neighborhood issues that might arise and.
And that the community knows that it's just not us deciding, that it's gotten a little, from the sample pool from Board of Selectmen.
Which is, in some cases, is the, uh, presiding authority on some of the issues that, that were raised. So, um, I think we feel good about the work that is ahead in terms of, uh, the permitting.
Yeah, and I think after you've left the meeting, they, we've scheduled a site access walkthrough tomorrow, so Greg's joining us, Greg's the town administrator from Manchester. Um, the team's coming back out with the feedback from the community meeting and, uh, the town manager, they're gonna kind of walk through what the plan is and make any adjustments to it. And I believe we're going Thursday night to the Board of Selectmen to start talking about some of these issues, that kind of just came up.
Oh, really?
Yeah, because, um, we, we took a call after our meeting on Friday and went through some of the feedback from the meeting, with Greg there, so.
Okay, great, um, when are you going to the Board of Selectmen, Thursday?
I think we're on board for Thursday night, I don't necessarily have confirmation yet, but we tentatively penciled that in, just to, to share some of, um, to basically share the slide deck.
Okay.
And go through and get any feedback from them, that might be helpful in planning.
Okay, great, I'd love to attend, but I am halfway through with guidance for tenth grade. Um, in terms of the meeting, we are, in terms of the school building committee, where we are is.
We have, we're not meeting.
We have no deadlines right now, right now, the main focus is on getting all this permitting done, so I think we're meeting again until.
Next Tuesday.
Next Tuesday. Yeah.
We haven't met since our last one.
Yeah, but things are fine, like, we're in a good place and we're, uh, we're just meeting, we're meeting our deadlines, so we're going.
Okay.
Great, thank you for all of that. Um, finance committee, so, you want to take that? Finance committee, we had a meeting on Friday morning to talk about building stuff.
Mm-hmm.
And we also talked about town meeting, um, expectations, Manchester is coming up in the beginning of April. And, uh, I think, you know, we don't see, we don't anticipate any issues in terms of questions about the budget or, um, I think we heard from the town of Essex about their budget, um, they were, had, still had a sixty thousand dollar shortfall and had some ideas about how they were gonna reduce that shortfall. Um, but everything is as agreed, so I don't think that we had any budget issues, there were, um, uh, just a lot of kind of like regional backs and forth, back and forth about, um, about what's happening with the building and, um, also, uh, other areas of collaboration that are possible. So that was kind of, it was a good meeting. Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, yeah. And, um, yeah, again, the town meeting, I, there no, doesn't, there don't seem to be any dogs on the beach issues, so I suspect it'll be. Huh?
Oh, we got fluoride.
Yeah, fluoride's gonna be.
Fluoride.
Well, is fluoride before, is fluoride before us or after?
I don't know.
It's after you, it's after you, I happen to know.
Oh, because you've seen the warrant.
I memorized it.
All right, thank you, communication, Rachel and Ken.
So we've not, um, we have not had a community, there are a communication policy meeting, but we have the meeting as a third grade task force with Tricia facilitating, and last week we took a series of, I guess, all of the, we, there were a number of questions that the group, members of the group answered and then we did kind of affirming them and making some judgment statements on that, actually, do you want to speak a little bit to the next steps?
Um, sure, so our next steps will be to look at the judgment statements and apply them to the mission and determine if, um, the positives outweigh the negatives and really, really get deep into making decisions about, um, given what we know and what we believe or what the people at the table know and believe, um. the people at the table know and believe, are we headed in the right direction, or should we be looking at a different type of experience? And we'll know that.
I hope we just see the range of different perspectives that people have been involved in, have personally involved and have gone through it, had kids. So I think it's a good, I think it's a valuable process for just building that, I know it's even building consensus so much as sharing a common view or sharing perspectives.
Yeah, yeah, to have all the voices heard.
Yeah, well done.
Thank you.
So that's all we have.
Okay. Okay, great. When is your next meeting?
That's about Tuesday.
Tuesday?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Negotiation, I guess we will be talking about that in executive session, right? So we'll pick that later. Tricia, NEAS report.
Yes. So we did have our collaborative conference visit back in November, and received our report from the NEAS, which we have. What I've tried to do is kind of just break down the report to some of the highlights or things that we should be looking at. This slide you can't probably see, but there's a 10-year cycle for NEAS. And we're really just in that second block. So the first block says self-reflection, which we did last year into this hall. And then the second block says collaborative conference visit, which is three members coming out for two days, spending their time in the school, meeting with various stakeholders, reading our self-reflection report, which was about 60 pages long, and then making a determination about if they agree with our report or not, and highlighting areas that we should focus on in our school improvement plan in the next one to two years. They'll be back in November of 2020 to, actually, the 16th and 17th, something like that, November of 2020, to see what steps we've taken, to what steps we've taken to meet those goals that they've set for us. And then we file various reports at three, six years, and then we start the process over again when we get to 10 years. This is their new format. So we're one of the first schools to go through their new format. The report that you received was broken down in this manner. It had the school summary that we provided. It defined their learning standards. It defined the NEAS process. Then the last topics, foundational elements, standard elements, self-identified priority areas, recommendations, recommendations, other things I'm going to speak to tonight.
Oh, it's on the back page.
Yeah, and the full report's pretty long.
Full report's in your email from Florida.
Yeah.
I read it.
Yeah. So what our process was, in 2017-18, last school year, we had a steering committee, which was made up of the department chairs and myself, and a self-reflection committee, which was made up of the school councils. So that included parents, teachers, and students. During the summer, the Shell report, I wrote kind of to take the feedback I had gotten during the year and have it prepared. In the fall, the faculty provided, reviewed that Shell report and provided evidence in terms of lesson plans and curriculum. We also voted. And then in November, the site committee came and visited us. So the foundational elements for NEAS are like the essential building blocks. These are the, you either have it or you don't. And if you don't, that's going to be a priority area. We purposefully kind of went in knowing that we were going to have one that we did not meet. And that was the vision of the graduate, which is new terminology from NEAS that kind of talks about the transferable skills and knowledge. And some schools kind of try to rush to like meet the standard, just to meet the standard. And we made the decision that we weren't going to rush in six months to create something that is really valuable to the future and vision of our school. And we knew that this would be something that we did not meet, and we were fine with that. And we'd like to make that a priority in terms of strategic planning beginning next year.
And how new is that standard?
This year.
Oh, really?
Yeah, we're the first school to hit it. So, yeah, there was any time to do it right, so, yeah. So the five standards are listed above, and each standard has principles of effective practice. There's 32 of them in total that describe how you can meet that standard. So what NEAS has provided us with is a narrative on each of those five standards stating how we are effectively meeting the principle in areas where we might want to look a little more closely. So learning culture was our first, and certainly the vision of the graduate is a big piece of that. So we know that we need to have that focus. We were cited as having a safe, positive, respectful, and inclusive learning environment. Our school improvement plan was cited as being innovative. They noticed shared leadership between high school administration, department heads, and teachers. They cited transferable skills focused on creativity, collaboration, and communication within our curriculum. They did say that we need to develop a process to communicate individual learning and schoolwide progress for learning expectations. And that's something that would come after we do the vision of the graduate. So you have the vision of the graduate that tells you what those things are, and then you need to come up with a separate mechanism, other than the report card, to kind of communicate to parents and as a school district, how students are able to do that. So that's part of that work after the vision of the graduate. We have a written curriculum that focuses on skills. Many schools don't have very specific written curriculum, and that's something we've made as a priority area over the last few years. They noted that teachers use formative assessment regularly, and that social-emotional curriculum is addressed through our ruler program. They did see the ruler program throughout their stay in terms of inaction in classrooms, and also just in terms of what we have posted around school and the way teachers communicate. One place they said we could use more work is that although we do have a lot of authentic tasks and projects, they noted that teachers in college and AP tend still to be a little more traditional. That's very common in AP courses because of the prescribed curriculum. But they're challenging us to move beyond that and become more authentic in those classes. And we did surveys prior as part of our self-reflection, and that included students, teachers, and parents. And that showed that our broad core and elective curriculum engaged students in a variety of ways. Also under student learning, they noted that there are places where teachers use reassessment in terms of promoting the growth mindset, but that we don't have a school-wide policy around that, and that not all teachers allow for reassessment or retakes of tests and quizzes. And that's a philosophical conversation that we may need to engage in in the future. And again, the reporting on skills and habits is something that was kind of a theme. The vision of the graduate and the reporting on skills and habits seemed to be the two themes that ran throughout the report. And then one thing they noticed from their interviews was that our BYOD policy can create challenges, and that it's not one common software. And so I have passed that on to the technology strategic planning committee in terms of talking about maybe mandating a Chromebook or mandating one particular device for the school. In terms of professional practices, our school improvement and growth plan in our organizational practices are meant to meet and support student learnings. I think they appreciated, as you see in many of these comments, our school improvement plan in terms of looking for student-centered learning, social-emotional, and continuous improvement. One place they thought that we needed more focus was on teacher evaluation, and that although department heads engage in some instructional coaching, I should say coaching, not coaches, I'm the primary evaluator, which is really a challenge to me in terms of how much time I'm truly able to dedicate to do that well. And that's something I've struggled with for a number of years in terms of my own responsibility. And oversight of the curriculum in terms of making sure that the processes of written taught and learned curriculum is aligned is something to look at. And I think with both of those, adding the academic dean, academic behavioral dean, is going to be tremendous in terms of providing more time for me to solve these problems. They thought as though in terms of meeting student needs, we do a good job, and the survey reflected broad satisfaction, including students on 504s and IEPs, that we do a good job of meeting a variety of individual needs. And they liked that there was a lot of heterogenously grouped courses, that not everything is leveled. They liked the social-emotional support. A lot of the things are kind of repetitive, and that students do receive health services and ensure health and emotional well-being from adequate certified. I would say better than adequate, but they wrote the word adequate, but I would say better than adequate.
I wondered if that adequate was charged. You know what I mean?
I don't know that it was. I think they're like, yeah, this is, it's sufficient. I think because later in their report, one of their recommendations is maybe to add more staffing. And I think they say, okay, you're meeting it. I don't think that's a, it's definitely not a statement on personnel in any way, shape, or form. So.
But the amount, the level.
The amount.
It might not have enough.
Yeah.
Quantity.
Quantity, yes. In terms of learning support, again, the LRM in Commons was celebrated. One thing they wondered was whether classes should be coming in here to meet with the librarian to learn about research assistance. And that's something we've been talking about, whether that should be embedded within the curriculum in the classroom, or if it should be a pullout to the library, considering that many things are digitized and can happen in the classroom. I think we're in the middle of a bit of a change there, but it's something we continue to discuss. Learning resources, certainly, they were really impressed by our buildings, facilities, the support by the community, the school committee, central administration of our program. The weakness they found was a lack of field space for athletics, and that's something we all know about. Not, that's totally not a surprise. They spoke about our relatively small class size and our intervention programs as being strong. Then we had provided self-identified priorities. So these are the things we said we wanted to work on. The development of the vision of the graduate, greater use of data, more interdisciplinary collaboration in courses, expanded curriculum for real-life connections, and continued work on a social-emotional learning. So those are things that we self-identified that we believed were important going forward, and want as part of our school improvement plan. And then we had some commendations. Our culture. I'm sorry.
Stay humble and kind, everybody. Stay humble and kind. Just a reminder. That shouldn't have been on. Commitment of faculty and principle of school improvement and growth, the new U Block, prioritizing student learning. Many of our student support programs that we've recently implemented, Academic Center, U Block, TAT, and Bridge. They really liked the SCORE project and the depth that that goes into. They also cited in there DUCA, I should say, DUCA ASR debate and the other green theme. The engagement of professional staff in the school improvement plan, and our community connections were our commendations. And then, in our core and elective program. Our recommendations
were, again, that communicating student work habits separately from the report card, and developing a vision of the graduate, consistent software for the computers, which was already stated, expansion of the school's counseling department in terms of getting them to collaborate more with classroom teachers. They stated an ad of a full-time librarian for the building and development of consistent collaborative program with academic departments in the school. That's one of their standards that's been a traditional standard. Again, process for curriculum coordination, and that will become one of my goals going forward in terms of next year, when I, having an academic dean and an athletic director, I think that will become more of my focus is curriculum in the high school. Again, the addition of a school adjustment counselor, which I think will be actually taken care of with the academic dean, who we sought after candidates that had their computer backgrounds. And then, again, examination of the teacher evaluation system, which we will take part in. So overall, I think it was a good study. I don't think that there was anything there that was tremendously surprising to us. In reviewing the standards, we kind of knew where we stood. And I think that the work they've set up for us, we can make to be meaningful work as opposed to checking the box. That's NEAS.
Thank you. I want to open it up to questions, but before I do that, I just want to say this was a great high school before you got here, and now it's a terrific high school.
Oh, thank you.
I've done some amazing things. I think some of the one has not met, you knew that. And I think that's just a question of putting all the pieces together and making a continuum, or maybe verbalizing the continuum a little bit more clearly. It's all there. And I think it's pretty obvious. The kids seem very happy. The teachers seem very happy. It's a great product. So I think you've done a fabulous job.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
So with that, you want to go around the horn?
Start on that side.
Well, that's right. We always start on my side. Sorry, I'm sorry, Sarah. Why don't you start over here?
Just want to thank you. It was a great report to read. Really interesting. I thought it was a nice combination of input from here and reaction from them. It was really interesting. And I think you are great at doing the work that is going to come next out of that report.
I'm looking forward to it.
It's going to be good work. Have you, I don't know if we're going to do it now or after this discussion, but do you want to give us an update on those two important hires? Are those, is that going?
I can tell you that we have two finalists for each position that have been moved on to negotiate contracts with PM, and we're just waiting for the final signatures on contracts. I can tell you, we're tremendously excited and pleased with the candidates that we found. I think we had a strong process with a lot of input from people. And I'm always surprised at the outcome of processes when you just kind of let the process happen. Usually, the right person rises to the top, and I think we found that this time. I'm happy.
I think that's going to be, you know, looking at the things that are on this list for next steps, I think that's going to be nice for you to have.
It's going to be great. So I appreciate your support with that.
Want to zigzag?
Sure.
So the AP and honors classes and the kind of traditional assessments, so those prepare you for college. How, I mean, you don't want to kind of create some sort of an assessment that doesn't really align with what is happening in college. So I'm wondering if you can tell us a little bit about what's happening at the college level that you can justify making changes in assessment?
I think at the college level, there was an article a few years ago in the Bossa Gold magazine, and it talked about how at Harvard, only, I think, I may quote this number, it was either 26 or 28 percent of courses actually have an exam at the end, that most courses have either a project or a paper-type product at the end of the course. So I think there is a change at the college level in terms of the types of assessments we're seeing. I think it continues to be hard, though, at the AP program, because the AP exam is a very prescribed test. And so what teachers are doing is having kids practice to make sure they are... sure they are prepared for that test. So varying away from that, that I think concerns teachers, that the kids won't be prepared. I think at the honors level, we may be able to do a little bit more in terms of some authentic experiences for kids or public display of work and things like that, but I think it's.
Such a shame.
Yeah, yeah, it is, you know. And so then you kind of, you have to weigh, weigh the two. I guess there are some schools that have moved away from AP. I don't see as our community being a school that would want to go in that direction, because so many students are able to achieve high levels on those exams and are able to receive college credit and graduate sooner. So, you know, there's a.
It's a balance.
It's a balance.
Yeah, there's a financial component.
There is definitely, yeah. And if you can, you know, students are able to achieve fours and fives, and our teachers are able to raise them to that standard, then certainly that's going to assist them after graduation.
So I'm looking at, it's under student learning, page 22. The school currently has no mechanism to assess achievement of school-wide learning expectations and few common assessments to ensure consistent and equitable learning opportunities across grades of courses. There's also no separate reporting for work habits and academic skills. So I just wonder, what is that going to, if you're going to change that, what does it look like?
So I've been down that road two different times, and both were epic fails. So I'm going to do it completely differently.
What are they really looking for?
So what they're looking for is development of vision of the graduate that actually defines the skills and habits of minds that students should have upon graduation. And that should be developed K-12. I don't like that it's a 9-12 thing, because it's not a 9-12 thing. It's a K-12 thing. And what they want is either a narrative, or a rubric, or some other reporting mechanism that states how the student is doing in terms of meeting maybe communication skills. So at both my prior districts, it used to be a NEASK requirement. You didn't have it, you didn't, you were put on warning, is what happened. So at Masconomet we did it, and the first time, we sent out the forms, you know, the parent would call, is this part of their GPA? No. Okay. And like, people just disregarded them. So then in Reading, I actually led the study group in Reading, and I thought that we came up with some really good definitions of what we wanted kids to know and be able to do. But they, at the end of the day, again, when we reported it out, it had no meaning in terms of the college process, and there was very little buy-in by the community. So I think the struggle is, and that's something, having had that experience twice now, I think it's something I've internalized, is it needs to become meaningful. And if it's not meaningful, people aren't, parents, students, teachers are not going to buy into it.
Right.
So it's finding a way to make that meaningful and to really focus on learning and skill development and not on grades or GPA. And that's a really hard challenge, because I know, you know, for my own children, I want them to have good grades, because I want them to go to college. But I also want them to be learning and developing skills. So it's really a change or shift in thinking about what we do in school. And then it's trying to get to the thing, it's not all about grades. It's really about learning and skill development, but I don't know.
We need cooperation from the colleges.
We need to solve that. We do. And I've always actually said that, like, if colleges didn't look at GPA and things like that, and there are schools that, there's a few, there's a school in New York and a few other schools that have moved narrative report cards, and they are being accepted at the college level. So, and there is a mastery report card group that we looked at becoming a group. It started with private schools joining together a coalition of creating the mastery transcript rather than the GPA transcript. And that's a group that we're able to join, but now they charge a fee. So I'm kind of like, why are they charging a fee? But there is a movement towards that, so again.
Because Waring does that. The Waring School.
Yeah, they do. All narrative, right.
That's a lot of time.
It is, it is a lot of time. It's very different. And when you have 100-plus students, that's very different than at the Waring School. But there are ways to look at, you know, when you go to the elementary school and you look at a standard trace report card, it's not about grades, it's about learning. It's how have you progressed towards this standard? And then for some reason, when we get in the middle of high school, we don't worry about how we're progressing towards meeting learning goals, we worry about grades. So, and that's across the country. That's not our school. So it's just a shift in thinking.
But couldn't you, I mean, I know we're not going to solve this problem here, again. Seems to me that you can build, you're putting the onus on a faculty member. And I'm wondering if you built the skill assessment into the courses, so that you could say, you know what, I can check this one off because I have this skill that I've developed in this, or in SCORE. Do you use SCORE as a vehicle to kind of?
SCORE might be a place. One place that's where something very similar, starting to grow organically is in the social studies department. They have a student citizen rubric that they use each quarter, where they talk about participation, and they talk about oral communication, and the kids grade themselves, and the teachers, and then they actually have conversations about it. That's kind of along the line of where we need to go. And maybe expanding that model even in a broader sense across the disciplines might be a way to get there.
Just one other thing. I'm hoping that, is the dean, can the dean help you at all with evaluation?
Yes, 100%.
That's what I realized. I forgot to ask you after I read the report. It's one of the things that came up as to be worked on was the whole, not just that you're flat-out busy and department heads need to do, but just the process.
The process, yeah.
And is that being done statewide?
I don't, I don't know that it's being done statewide, because when they rolled out the statewide evaluation system, what, eight years ago, I think people have implemented and within districts are making tweaks to make it work for them. And I think that's something that we're talking about doing here. And I think adding the dean to be able to take on some of those evaluations, and maybe increasing the amount of coaching done by department chairs would be work in the favor. I think we could, we could get more out of everybody.
You're being very modest. We are contrary to what many people might believe. We're very light on administrators who are qualified to do evaluations. So up until recently, it's really just been one principal, the principal at the elementary in the middle, and then the principals at each elementary school with an assist from the directors on special education for the most part. So that's the entire staff of 150 over about five administrators. It's typical to have, and more and more moving in the direction of having kind of a mid-level management group that can do the full evaluation and is part of a Unit B. We discussed that some years ago. We just haven't, we may never get there, but we are pretty light on people who can assist with this work. So two minor adjustments, adding the both deans at the middle and high school will be somewhat a relief in that area.
Odd question, just kind of coming from the private sector. I started off with the classic top-down model going through in the past couple decades of living in the, okay, you do your self-evaluation, standards are agreed, you do. Is that part of the evaluation model at all? Okay.
Yeah.
And it's just, it's okay.
So there's a self-evaluation piece, there's a goal-setting piece, and then there's.
Portfolio development.
Yeah, there's evidence.
Sarah, did you want to go?
We're going to go back and forth.
I don't have any questions, but as a parent with one on the way out and one on the way in, I can say that the high school's a wonderful place, and I'm very excited for the next four years, and I think you're doing a great job.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Carolyn?
The only thing that I think hasn't been touched on that, just I wanted to state, is that the growth mindset of retaking tests, I think it's a philosophical thing, and I think that that probably plays into what you were just talking about, GPA versus the learning. So I think that's something that is worth investigating more here and kind of come to a, either we do it or we don't. So, I mean, I think.
I think at first, when I heard that you could do that, I was kind of like, oh, you know, if you hadn't studied it. But if a kid hasn't grasped the concept, why wouldn't you let them retake it, not for the grade, but to understand that you've got, you've understood the concept before moving on? So I don't know. I think that there's more work to be done there, and I think you should keep working on that.
Yeah, and there's a lot of good research and reading on that, so that's something we'll go back to.
But do you have to, does everyone have to have same practice? Because when you have a boss, right, you may have a boss that says, I'll let you fix that screw-up. And then you may have a boss that's like, screwed up, sorry, you're done. I mean, I feel like if everyone gets.
I think within the same grade level in a department, it has to be the same. So if I have.
In the department or across the whole school?
I think I wouldn't want to make that statement on my own, because I'd want to have a broad school. But I think if I'm taking Algebra I and you're taking Algebra I, and we have different teachers.
Right, I agree, yep.
That has to be consistent. And it may be as you move through the years, you know, by senior year, maybe it looks different than it does freshman year. And I think that's kind of where we are right now for the most part. But I think there is still, it does vary from department to department, and I think it is a conversation.
Can I chime in on this too?
Yeah.
Just because I had a really interesting conversation. I believe in the middle school, it is the policy, the test retake. And I had an interesting conversation with a mom who didn't want her kid to be allowed to retake the tests. So I just think that maybe one component is the parent education around all of this is going to be really important.
I did. I had a question. I wanted to go a little bit more on the full-time librarian at the high school. And I'm a library geek to begin with, and it's been interesting to see like the class I have in elementary schools, kind of as they learn, it's definitely a lot more centralized to this library and learning skills. But as the older kids get on, I know that there's been a shift here away from a full-time librarian. But at the same time, I feel like the kids are getting some of that in each class at scale, too. Okay, here's how you find out about math, or this is history, your source is there. What's the, it kind of surprised me, it seems like you're very, is it a traditionalist thing, oh, you have a full-time librarian at the high school? Or what's the, explain a little bit more about what the concern was they had?
That's been one of their standards for a number of years, is that you should have a full-time librarian. I think then you need to look at what are you defining as a librarian, because I think that role has changed over the last 10 years, and technology is a much greater piece of that role. And so if you were to, if you have somebody with a strong technological background that can support digitized resources as well as the traditional library, then it's more powerful. But I think their, their statement is a long-term standard that they've had, at least that's, that's a value judgment by me. I probably should make that. But that's kind of where I think that comes from.
I think when we get into part two, what I was going to comment on, there are some components of recommendation that are resource-based and a little bit out of control of the high school at times, like things like fields, for example. I don't think anyone disagrees we should have more fields, but we don't have the resources. And I think the librarian is another piece, and we're working, I think if you looked at the documents in the budget component, we're working toward redistributing stuff that had been a little bit heavy at the elementary and trying to bring it back. So there's a multi-year plan to try to get the newly defined concept of library media specialist, tech integrator.
I guess, piggyback on that, is what is the digital literacy responsibility of a classroom teacher? Because I was in a car today with two college kids and a high school kid, and we were talking about what the expectation is, you know, for a paper. And I think Annie actually was in pretty good shape compared to one of the college kids that was, you know, it's just, I, you know, they're being expected to write in their discipline. And so I can't expect a librarian to know all of that. I would expect the teacher, the classroom teacher, to have an understanding of what digital literacy is in their discipline.
I actually, I agree with you in terms of when we're talking about moving away from just knowing facts and figures and learning skills.
Yep.
Technical writing, or research writing, or his, writing in the, in terms of like a history paper, those are things that should be embedded in the classroom, and it should be used as a tool to learn the content rather than to.
So is that part of a PD plan?
It's part, something that we've been working on actively, but will continue to work on.
And that's the coaching role of the digital literacy specialist, which is to coach up staff that were at all differing levels of expertise, and get them solid and on their own two feet, so it can be integrated into the classroom.
Rachel, did you have?
So, to the point of the library and the librarian, we don't have a big library where kids can come and do research and sort the card, you know, look at the digital card catalog. So how are, I'm like, because we don't have that, they, you know, I know that our kids have used the Beverly Library, they've gone to other libraries. And I think that's one area where a librarian would really be helpful, because you have to write so many research papers in college. And I feel like, I think we're preparing our kids pretty well for that, but I know that we've moved a little bit away from that and done more group projects. So I just want to make sure that kids are getting what they need in terms of how to do their research, how to look up the data, how to, you know, the Dewey Decimal, I mean, these are all kind of old-fashioned terms, but they're still really, really relevant. And, and I just want to make sure that our curriculum is really supporting that. And, you know, I know we don't have a full-time librarian, but it's something that I know that kids could use a hand in.
We're looking at having one within two years.
Yeah.
But I really just want to stress, this isn't a high school's only problem. We don't have enough teachers to teach the kids in classes. And we've got, you know, English teachers are 30 kids in a class, and middle school English teachers carrying a load of 130. So I don't think it's about not respecting or wanting to have a full complement, but it's about making, prioritizing and having to make some tough choices. And this was an opportunity that we had with a retirement to move FTE into classroom.
Right.
So I think later, we're going to show a multi-year plan to try and build back to it. We're also going to talk about some budget challenges coming our way. That could slow that down.
Right. And then for the bring your own device, are we, where are we in that? I know that that's sort of a.
So, yeah, we do have a bring your own device. We haven't been as direct, maybe as we should be with families about the need for kids to bring their own device. And I think that maybe looking at providing opportunities for leases or purchase of Chromebooks from the district would move towards being more direct in that respect.
Is there movement in that direction, or is it still?
I believe the Technology Task Force, not on that, but I know that they have been talking about it.
For a while, we've talked about, and I guess it just hasn't been executed, getting, you know, putting out the letter that you get when your freshman is getting ready to go to college, which is, these are the devices, these are the options for devices, this is what we recommend that you have. So I mean, I think that's an easy first step. I'm going to sound a little bit like a broken record. Not have, I mean, we could easily decide to go to the school leases a Chromebook for every student. I just need the resources to get that done. So we've gone with BYOD again, because when we did some initial surveying, we had more than 50%, close to, I want to say it was 80% at the time, of kids bringing their own devices. So we were trying to maximize on the resource that already existed without creating a new budget line. So I think we're getting to the point where some of our financial decisions are having implications on the learning environment. So we either have to find new ways to move resources that we have out of one location into another, or find new funding streams from the town to enhance what we're doing.
And within the school, I think we need to create a stronger, it's an expectation that you bring your device. And there are kids that have devices and just don't bring them to school. And as a result, when the teacher's in the classroom, ready to, you know, execute their plan, and five kids over here don't have devices because they didn't bring them to school that day, it kind of throws off a lesson plan. So I think we need to up our expectation that this is some, like a tool that a student should bring to school on a daily basis, just like you bring a pencil, you need to bring your Chromebook that you have.
I think there's even an intermediate step around, oh, here's the device that we would recommend and suggest to you, because everyone will have one.
The one you don't need.
Supportable. Yeah. Yeah, or the one you don't need in class.
And the MacBook you don't need.
Right.
So, no, that would, more direction on that, I think would be welcomed by parents than several.
I think that's really our only option in the near future.
Yeah, I agree. The other option, just status quo, would bring whatever you can find, which is. The other option, just status quo would bring whatever you can find, which is.
The only other question I had was, I know that we had graduates come back a couple of years ago and do kind of a survey about, you know, how well they were prepared for, for college or their jobs or what have you. I think I talked to David recently and he said it was done a couple of years ago. Is that something you want to do kind of more regularly?
So we do it every year with sophomores in college. So the guidance staff sends out a survey to all of the, to sophomores in college to ask how well they've been, how well they were prepared, what they thought they were prepared well in, where we could do a better job. And the guidance advisory council reviews those results and then reports out on them. We've made that an annual thing now. I think this is the second, only the second or third year we've done it.
What's the take-up rate on that?
The first year it was low, I want to say it was like 20%. But then what we've started doing was when we check kids out at graduation and we give them their final records and all that, we get their email address so that we have their, their regular email address as opposed to the ME app so that we have a better opportunity to communicate with them. So that's something we've added on.
We'll get your phone home, we should come back and see us in two years.
Yeah, exactly.
In the, just one more thing, in the, there was a little bit of talk about, I know we do a really good job of civic engagement. I'm hoping that we can kind of work our community service to be a little, have a little more kind of guidelines. I feel like some people just kind of get it where they can or, you know, I'd love it to have some more kind of, sort of social civic mindedness to it, if there could be like a sort of a component for that. So just food for thought.
Sure, we can take a look at that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You want to talk ADL?
ADL.
Still Kim because she's our ADL expert. So we were talking about the ADL World of Difference program and hopefully pushing it down. That's, that's a bad verb, but you know what I mean, pushing it down.
Extending it.
Extending it to the younger grades, maybe making it an entire district effort. And where, where do we start on that? I would, it's been very successful.
I'd say we're in year one at the high school.
That was an impressive night, by the way.
The kids were fantastic.
The kids were amazing.
They were amazing, yeah.
Credit goes to Tricia, she identified a concern and, I'm not talking for you, so just jump in. And she had reached out to the ADL and was like, how long are you on the waitlist?
Year and a half.
Yeah, so we spent a year and a half on the waitlist before we could. So it may seem like we're just doing it now, but we've been in the queue to do it for some time. I think the program's great, it was impressive the other night, it's just being rolled out to students. And I think we should, I mean, my recommendation would be we take a systematic approach to it and temper expectations with an understanding of how much else we have going on right now. That may also be working to support this work down the line. So we're also only in year, going into year three next year of Ruler. And that's been a very heavy lift, K-12. I think a systematic way to do it would be let the high school get comfortable and then leverage our peer leaders to start working with the middle school. I think the middle school is actually anxious to get on board. Or they're going to the World of Difference Conference next Thursday, April 12th, on a Thursday, April 12th. And I know that they have articulated that they've had experience with it in the past and actually used to be quite involved with the program. So I would think that they would be quick to jump on board.
Will we have to be on a waitlist or now that we've already got ADL in the district?
Well, we broached that topic with her a little bit and asked, is it Kim? Is her name? Asked if we could retain her as the trainer for some consistency. She seemed to indicate that if we had asked, if we asked, that might be the case. So I think what I'd like to do is if it, I don't think it's not in interest of anyone, but just get a sense from the principals about realistically what a timeline for rollout would be and what it might look like. I think we do worry about trying to do too many things at the same time and.
And not being effective.
Not that they would contradict, but not being effective.
Effective, yeah.
I thought an idea that came out of that evening session, I don't know if it was during that night or kind of in a post-debrief, but if we could engage the high school peer leaders, once they are, gain their confidence and have worked here, to maybe do some initial outreach to the elementary students, similar to what we do around understanding our differences and some of the outreach on the special ed, getting, kind of getting to know your disability and how it plays out. I think we've seen a nice impact from those and they've gone over very well with the upper elementary students. So that might be a way to do it in a less formal way, a little sooner, to just kind of share the experience. But I think middle school is also probably our target zone. So I don't know if anyone else had any questions, concerns or. I had put in a note to some of you, maybe this group or through the ME hub group, we could look at the community of difference. I know, I feel like we're broken records sometimes, but I feel like we are trying to do as much as we possibly can within the school. But if it's not being reinforced outside the school, it's not necessarily going to stick. So if the communities wanted to take on something like that, it might be interesting. And timing may not be now, but it might be something for us to look into. It's kind of along with the old, no place for hate community pact.
I'm glad you hear me say that. More, again, the only program, I did not make it to that night, the program where it goes looks excellent. My only concern is it's like picking a curriculum, you've got one path. And I see at the elementary school, I'm embarrassed I can't remember all the letters of like heart, I have to be interested in memorial. I feel it's effective.
Honesty.
Effort. All those respects.
Honesty, acceptance.
Acceptance, okay.
Effort.
Honesty, effort.
Effort, acceptance, thoughtfulness.
Acceptance.
There are two As in there.
In the right, in the right. Each of the elementary schools are built around their core values. They have town meetings, school meetings.
And I like that, we just want to make sure it complements it appropriately, yeah, as that goes, so.
I think also, I mean, one of the things I've mentioned a couple of times is when you walk down the halls, I mean, I know at the elementary level, we have a lot of this, but to do some, some kind of branding for what our mission is, is both educate. You know, we don't have, I mean, let the art department or the kids make some really cool banners that are really, you know, tasteful and they hang, as you, you know, they could just be this wide and just have like our core values and some words that are all about inclusion. I think, I think, you know, it may sound corny, but I think seeing those messages as you're walking down the hall every single day is really, really enforcing. And if kids wanted to get on board and design them, I think that would be a really cool project and, you know, it wouldn't cost that much.
Well, that's the concept behind the ruler and the mood meter and having that language in those checkpoints.
But just seeing them in the hall, I think like when you walk in, it's just like really impactful. I've been to, you know, many debate tournaments, been to many schools and they just always have like their kind of, you know, core language, their identity and their sort of brand kind of right there, which I think is great. And Sandy Hook Promise also has a program called Start With Hello, which I think 60 Minutes did a piece on, which is very low cost and it's another program that we could, it includes community leaders, teachers and students ages eight to 18. So that's another one that is very simple to implement and low cost that, you know, we could dovetail with ADL, so anyway. It's called Start With Hello. Do you want to check it out?
All right, so in the interest of time, I think we need to move on because we do want to adjourn at Saturday, which probably won't happen, but let's just keep.
Tricia, thank you very much. Happy, I appreciate all your support.
She don't want to stick around? We're doing budget now, we're starting with FY20. Yep, now I'm going to three, three quick ones because I know we've got people here for budget. I told you about that. You know what, I have calendar, which we could probably save till the end.
You're reading for me to just plug in?
No, the only other thing I wanted to mention, I have the calendar to go over with you. Like I said, we'll do that at the end so we don't waste too much time. It's just, it's on my shout-outs list. We are sponsoring, this is actually the work of Julie DeRoche and some of her partners in the Assistant Superintendents Group. We are going to be the site and one of the lead sponsors of the North Shore Leadership Series dedicated to examining current research on reading. You know that we have an ALE task force that's up and running, that's looking at our core curriculum and our practices. What we found is when we started having conversations with other communities, we are all struggling with the same concern, which is we have a growing intervention support system, which is drawing considerable dollars. But what we're finding is a root cause perhaps might be the core curriculum in reading, which is not necessarily getting done what we need to get done and pushing more kids into an intervention support need than is necessary. So we're creating problems. The way we're delivering instruction may be contributing to the problem, not creating the problem. So there's a whole group of school leaders and researchers and some colleges represented as well that are getting together and starting to raise awareness around this. So we're a little bit ahead of the curve, but I think it's just interesting to note that there's an ongoing discussion about the redistribution of budgets into intervention and support components of the, of the program and away from some of the core teaching pieces. So we're, you are invited to attend this, you'd love it if you came to learn yourself about what problem they're trying to solve. It's really a move to a more research-based approach to teaching reading. And I guess UConn, Endicott, Salem State and TOPPS are all looking to partner with us and study us because of these efforts. So that's kind of exciting. That's kind of the big piece of external exciting. The internal exciting is, you know, we're making headway with the, with our Partnership for Hill and trying to analyze and identify our local issues so that we can remediate them as quickly as possible to help our students. So it just makes some exciting work. She said she would come to one of our next meetings and answer questions and give you a much better description of it than I did because she is the expert in the field.
And remind us, where are we in the process? Didn't she just start this?
The needs assessment is rolling and Hill will be back in, I think, May 1st delivering results to staff groups and then coming to us after them. So May 21st meeting is lining up to be a marathon because that was part of the calendar discussion. Our next two meetings are pre-town meeting meetings. So we can certainly conduct business, it's all out in the open. But if large-scale presentations where we expect the public, I think we want to try to keep them to the 21st. So we've got the special ed review from the high school, we've got hopefully the needs assessment on reading. The auditors still need to come. And there's one other thing on the list. So, oh, in handbooks.
Wow, okay. Everybody bring sleeping bag, popcorn.
And who is this open to? Is this just, is this just?
We're in, they're inviting a district leadership so that they can learn about the problem, so that they can be supportive. And then there's going to be follow-up sessions.
But we can come?
You are invited, yes.
Some of us are pretty excited about that.
She'll probably send you. She'll send you a more formal invitation, but she wanted me to be sure to let you know that it's going along swimmingly and we have 70 districts already signed up.
Wow, that's awesome. It's great.
Okay, all right. ADL World of Difference Middle School was my other piece, calendar, if we have time at the end, we can go into it in greater detail. But we have one, we want to give you an update on the budget. We've got a couple of things going on. First, we have to brief you on Phase Two, the efficiencies and reorganizations. If you remember, we had outstanding for the high school, we still need to figure out a way to fund a .4 foreign language, .4 athletics, which is addressed in the reorganization program, and .4 art, which is addressed in the reorganization program. So my, our second piece on reorganization will cover those two items. Outstanding will be .4 foreign language. A little bit bigger news is we needed to give you an update on some of the assumptions we made in our basic FY20 budget and how that's progressing. We're still waiting on Chapter 70, regional transportation, circuit breaker numbers for next year. And based on my legislative meeting from last Friday, we won't know that until July. If all the work around the foundation review, the competing proposals on the Hill, it doesn't seem like this is going to get sorted out anytime soon. There's great possibility that we get a little bit more in Chapter 70 than we budgeted for. That regional transportation could get fully funded. And that circuit breaker comes in at its record high of 75%. And we've also made a direct ask that they include special education transportation in that. That is the best-case scenario and I don't know that we'll get everything. There's a hearing this Friday. I'm on schedule to attend and present on behalf of our local roundtable. We're advocating and we're advocating for suburbans that aren't going to get a whole lot from just the recalculation of Chapter 70 based on need and enrollment. That's a long way of saying, we've got assumptions in there on state aid that we really won't have a solid look at until July. Can't imagine they'll go down in this climate. But when we talk, when we brief you now on our other assumption, which was out of district spending, you're going to see why we're watching every number and counting every penny. So the big story tonight is that our assumptions on special ed out-of-district placement have grown considerably. They are not definite at this point, but we're going to present to you what we see as our most conservative outlook for next year and try to show you how we've developed a funding path to address the situation. I think we were, well, why doesn't Avi take you through the numbers and then we can talk about the details? So this is definitely something that is a must-watch from now to the end of the year.
So just as background, I think this is something we talk about every year. And so I wanted to recap what's going on with the current year budget fiscal '19. On the left, you see kind of what we budgeted, what some of the assumptions were. And on the right is kind of an update of where we are right now. So we start every year with what I will just call gross tuitions. And we have various funding offsets that kind of alleviate what the budget needs to absorb, which is at the bottom. So in fiscal '19, the actual budget from the general fund, taxpayer-funded budget, is $550,000. But that assumes certain offsets and you may recall, some of them are very standard. We always have circuit breaker funding as a reminder. That's a state aid grant that reimburses districts for tuition costs over a certain amount. So they basically take a number, which is a foundation number, and they only reimburse about 72 to 75% of what's over that foundation amount. They assume that you have to absorb all that foundation. So 115 what's in there. We always talk about pre-pays. So at the end of fiscal '18, we had, we were talking about budgeting 125,000. And you may remember, the big number here is the $200,000 reserve that we said, look, we, we don't know, when we set the budget a year ago at this time, how many of these tuitions that we're starting to see as possibilities will materialize. You're trying to budget in November, December, January for things that aren't going to start to happen until July or in some cases September of the following year. So we already had a budget gap. We didn't feel like we wanted to cut spending further for things that may or may not materialize. So we said instead, we're going to put the $200,000 as a set aside through reserves. And if they came to pass, we would have money to pay for them. And unfortunately, because they're funded from reserves, that meant we would need to eventually do some type of a budget adjustment to cut and get that money back. Sorry, because reserves are one-time monies, so you can't do that every year. So and tuitions tend to occur because often, once a student is placed, that tends to be a placement for some time. So fast forward to today, where we're at, the gross tuition's really not much different than what we forecasted, about 2.4%. We're doing much better with the funding offsets. We're not much better, a good bit better. Circuit breaker came in a little higher at the end of fiscal '18, which is money we use in '19 than we expected. The prepay, we are able to prepay a little bit more than we expected, at 125 turned into 157. We're able to use some of the IVA grant funds to offset tuitions. Typically, we do use about 20,000 of IVA grant funds. In this case, we use a little more. We try not to budget for them because we want to be budgeting conservatively. And then for school choice, even though some people, we talk about school choice as a reserve fund, we actually have school choice students that sometimes need to go out of district. When they do, that money gets reimbursed entirely from the sending district. So whereas we get a small amount of funds for school choice. So, whereas we get a small amount of funds for school choice students, normally if it's an out-of-district placement that gets reimbursed 100 percent, the only small asterix is that it comes in the subsequent fiscal year. Fortunately, these are revolving funds, so you can, what we agree to is the current practice is we'll charge the out-of-district tuitions for school choice kids to the school choice fund, and then a year later, it should wash out. Okay? So, we feel pretty comfortable this is a smart practice to just take that out of the budgetary picture. It avoids the budget going up and down for things that we're going to eventually get reimbursed. So, what is all this?
Can I ask a quick show of hands? Everyone clear on what circuit breaker is and how it works? Circuit breaker is the amount of money the state will reimburse for out-of-district tuitions above foundation, which I think is currently at $45,000. So, we will get somewhere between 65 and 75 percent reimbursement on all dollars above 45, but no reimbursement on transportation as of yet. That's what we've asked to be included going forward.
So, the reimbursement is 70 percent less you of that delta over 40,000, right?
Yeah. What they basically do is they take four times the average per pupil and then they, so let's say that works out to be about $45,000 in the state, then any amount over and above that they spent on tuition gets sent to the circuit through a reimbursement fund. Every year, the state says, how much money do we have? They're supposed to reimburse 100 percent if the funding is available. That's what the statute says. Tends to be typically around the high 60s to mid 70s reimbursement rate.
Thank you.
So, you know, in the old days, when our out-of-district tuitions were a lot higher, we were getting 200 to 300,000 in circuit breaker money. The other thing you should know about it is we get circuit breaker money in this year to reimburse what we spent last year. Okay? We could spend that money right away, but we are also allowed to hold it in reserve if necessary for one year only. And so, as a conservative budget practice, we have not been spending it in the year received. We've been holding it because we know that out-of-district is something that can spike unnecessarily. So, we've been, I'd say, conservative until now. And as you'll see, we may have to change some of that practice. So, in summary, where are we with '19? The gross tuition's not much of a surprise, but as a result of some of the offsets and the fact that we have some school choice dollars that don't need to flow through here at all, looks like we're really only looking to spend about 5,000 of the 200,000 set-aside. Good news. So, that's great. And that will also help us because it may help us with some of the prepayments that we need to do for fiscal '20.
But this could change.
This could change. We're in March now, and so we still have, was it four months left in the school year? And definitely, changes do happen. And fortunately, each placement, you're only having, you know, four tenths of a school year, so it's.
And we're, and we're coming up on the point in which if we've inherited, if we get a move-in, it goes to next year's bill, not this year's.
All right. So, looking at next year, here's where the numbers start to get concerning, and we've got to remember, the whole reason we had the $200,000 offset in the first place is because we really don't have a crystal ball of what's going to happen next year. But we're starting to see some things, including some potential move-ins and some residential placements that could be significant. So, if you just look at the top line, whereas we budgeted a million dollars, you know, it's now looking closer to, like, it could be as high as 1/6. So, that would be a substantial change, yes. Now, again, I would not ring the alarm bell that we're going to hit that number now, but it's certainly something we want to disclose to you. I think we do have a path that we can talk about. So, let's just recap what the budget path is, which is over here. We started with a million of gross. We offset a little less than last year, which is nice to know from a budgeting standpoint. We started a little bit healthier. We had a smaller gap this year than we did in fiscal '19 from the budgetary gap. So, that was good. About 100,000 in circuit breaker because circuit breaker has been going down in recent years. If these numbers come to fruition, it will go back up. We talked about 150 of prepay. That was a number we changed from tentative to final budget. 136,000 is a very similar number for school choice students going out of district, and we did not include a reserve set-aside. Also, a good place to start, we weren't starting assuming that we would need significant reserves. So, that's how we got to our budgetary estimate of 627, which is 13 percent up from the 553. But you can see, big picture, this $1 million compared to where we're at today, $1 million in '19 going forward to '20, pretty flat. So, this is why, when we talked about the budget for fiscal '20, we said, yes, there is a 13 percent increase, but it really relates to how we're funding and the actual tuitions are not really much different. Now, we're starting to look at some new information. Residential placements could easily cost you 150 to 225,000. And at this point, it's very early to know exactly what placements could be and how much they could cost. So, this is a conservative estimate of about $200,000 each. So, that right there gets you to a $600,000 potential delta. Where are we with?
These are students that Allison has identified already?
These are, yeah. We do all forecasting on a line-by-line individual basis as opposed to just theoretical buckets. But whether they come to pass exactly is kind of what's unknown. So, what are the potential offsets from potential growth of 1/6? Well, circuit breaker, I'm getting my cursor, bear with me. That number, no change there. Now, we are going to get about the same amount of money this year. Like I said, normally, we've been not spending it in the year reserved, but if we have a big spike like this, we would probably change that conservative practice and spend that year. So, we would spend the carry-forward and we would spend the current-year circuit breaker. And to be honest, this is what most districts do, who, you know, we tend to just have more conservative budgeting practices when we can because we know this can be an area that is unpredictable. Prepay, we would probably try and bump up our 150 to 200. The good news is that with this many, if it can be called good news, with this many potential residential placements, you have a lot more placements to potentially prepay. You know, whereas in the past, we haven't been able to prepay much more than this because Department of Ed tells you to typically keep it to about three months of prepayments. So, so that would be a target that is easier to hit, provided we have the funding. So, what does that mean? That means we need to make sure we land at the end of fiscal '19 with funds to pay that, which is not easy. We've been assuming 150, but it just got a little harder. I V A grant, as I mentioned, we don't typically budget that at the outset, and we didn't budget it here, but it's available and we would try to become a little less conservative in our assumptions. Yes.
So, you're 20 there, you had 37 in the previous year. So, can you bump that up if you need to?
Well, one of the, I don't know. I don't know. 20 has been the recurring average for what we've done in the past. 37 was a one-time outlier.
Okay.
But I don't know. Maybe we have to go there. I don't know if we can do that. Remember, really, what we're using the I V A grant for is for servicing, you know, various program needs. And, and really, the big picture is that the I V A grant doesn't grow significantly. So, it's not like we have a lot more funding. This number's still not changing on the school choice. And then, we would probably have to target savings of some other source in the fiscal '20 budget, right? So, we're already talking about using prepay by trying to clamp down spending in fiscal '19 to be able to prepay using this year's money to pre-fund some of next year. Well, we're also going to have to double down on that for FY '20. The problem with that is that, don't forget, we're probably going to want to prepay 21 with 20. So, you're really starting to, you can see how this starts to feel like when families are, you know, trying to make decisions about how much of a house they can afford, and you really start saying like, oh, I got to grab from here and I grab from there. These are, you're starting to see that this can have a potential impact of a significant. Will all of it hit? I don't know. But if we were able to do all of these things that are reasonable assumptions, but a stretch and clearly less conservative practices, what would that leave? It still leaves something. So, at that point, you've got a potential $350,000 delta, you know, whereas we had used $200,000 of reserves as a potential set-aside. First thing you should know is circuit breaker probably at this rate would go up about $400,000 in fiscal '21. And so, we would have a timing issue where we'd be waiting for that money. Districts without reserves are kind of just out of luck. We have reserves, and we talk about why we have them. This would be a time where we could potentially outlay that fund while we're waiting for the circuit breaker to come through. And so, that would really cover a lot of the, the delta. Of course, we don't know that all of this will be there. So, I think where we're at is, A, just want you to know, B, fortunately, this year is ending in a slightly better position, C, we'll update you as we get more information, as some of this becomes more clear. But it looks like we're kind of going back to this idea of needing to know that reserves may be there to help us with some of this problem. And if this comes to pass, you know, it will take our budget stance from what's been somewhat conservative to less conservative. So, we have a pathway. We can see how to go to get there, which is good. We don't even know that we're going to need to go all the way there, but it's kind of important enough that we wanted you to know.
And I think, just a closer on that is, this is not unlike where we were with the healthcare piece, which is we have a game plan to avoid making any last-minute dramatic cuts to next year, but this is lighting up FY '21 to be an extremely difficult year, probably compounded by issues that our, our town partners may be having as well. So, it's, it's starting to look like all of the insurance policies and the conservative practices that Avi's highlighted are, are good because we've got somewhere to go, but we're using them at a rapid rate and we're running out of options very soon. We're running out of efficiencies. There's almost nowhere left to go. So, that's more the concern immediately, I think. Our game plan for next year, we can hang on, but I think we'll have to, if this comes to fruition, and I'm not really convinced that the worst-case scenario will come today, but I think we'll have to have one of those summers where we start on budget immediately and start game planning some, some scenarios for FY '21 budget. So, so this is more of an FYI disclosure to make sure you guys are aware. So, hopefully, our surprises going forward will be that it's a fraction of what the possibility is.
Why don't we have more visibility?
This could go right through the end of the year, could even lead a little bit into the beginning of next year, depending on timing of everyone's work.
So, we could put all of these sort of less conservative measures in place, and then something could break in our favor, maybe next year?
Yes.
And that just sets us up with a little bit more.
Yep. Or we could have somebody move in.
Don't say that.
And we could be looking at a, I think it's, we are always asked about what the, you know, the wild card variables are in these.
Is out-of-district.
This is it. So, I would say we have a pretty good handle on what it's going to be, worst case, but you never know.
Right. Or at least we can plan for these or try to plan for these right now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And the good news is, from a financial standpoint, most of these potential offsets aren't really things we need to do immediately, other than get ready to end this year with sufficient funds to prepay not only what we estimated, which is not small, but it's about $50,000 more. And then, we have time to kind of wait and see what happens and start to put some contingency plans in place for things like the $100,000 of target savings.
Okay. I worry that all this catches up with us, but, I mean, I'm preaching to the choir.
It's going to catch up fast in '21.
Yep.
Yeah. I think, I think without question, once we have more information, I think it will impact what we do from a budget, our budget presentation for the fall will probably have a different tenor, you know, I would say, at this point, if some of this starts to come to pass because it's going to impact, you know, at the outset where we're at.
I don't think the conversations next year are going to be a tremendous surprise with our partners. We've been very clear that we have been managing very, very tightly and that O O D continues to be, as you said, the wild card out there and can just jump over the apple cart any minute. So, I think we've been very clear in messaging that.
And these students are entitled to the education that they're receiving.
Absolutely.
I think the frustration or the, the challenge is that there isn't a dedicated or new resource stream when the requirement increases. So, it's a shifting of funds from different cost centers to ensure we're making our mandate.
We're mandated to do these things, but we are not yet reimbursed at a full rate or any rate.
Hey, I think until now, this has been really not much of a big problem for the district because we've done so much on building in-district programming. When you start talking about residential placements, there's really not a lot you can do for that type of thing. Fortunately, those programs are, the percentage you get from circuit breaker ends up being higher for those because so, you're so much above the threshold.
With the law of large numbers.
Law of large numbers.
You get a bigger, bigger number, but you're spending more.
Yes.
Okay. Right.
There were a bunch of interesting threads about the topic on the school committee listserv.
About Chapter 70?
About out-of-district placement and move-ins and any budget at, at time, just when it can, can absorb the budgetary shock.
You know, we've been responsible for move-outs too that have gone to neighboring districts. So, it's just, it's part of what we have to endure.
Those mass, the listserv information were good. It made me thankful that we have at least have, of course, this started fixing the problems, understanding where it is, and thank you for raising that.
Okay. All right. So, you guys.
This is one of the problems we're wrestling with, which is managing this and keeping close watch on where this is going to land. We're watching and, you know, the state aid, so maybe there will be an assistant that, that will help with this. And we're also trying to manage, making sure we can get the staffing that they need at the high school to fill out the schedules in play. So, we had alluded to the reorganization of elementary specialist FTE to bring some relief to the high school. So, I think you have a chart that came in your packet. It's up on the screen. It's a little blurry. I think, like I said, we are running out. We are down to some of our last efficiencies. This one is an enrollment-driven efficiency. I think a couple of things off the top. Student program will stay the same in terms of if the student has art once a week, every week, the student will remain getting art once a week, every week. If they go to library once a week, every week, that'll stay. So, what the student course is, stays on track for the entire, for the entirety of the year. So, you know, we've had a decline in enrollment at the elementary, but we've had a, that bubble has now moved up to the high school, and we have some spots that we need to cover there. You heard about the recommendation to start re-implementing a librarian at the secondary level, so we think we've solved that, a little bit of that problem here. And the other thing is, there is no, there's actually a .1 increase to FTE, but no loss of total FTE to the district. So, it's really a shifting things around. So, let me take you two through rather quickly. Thing to keep in the back of your mind is we look at a special schedule being six classes a day, five days a week. If you grid out the elementary schedule on a seven-period day, that would give them one prep plus their lunch and six classes. So, with our current enrollment at both Essex and Memorial, we know from the foreign language model, and that's what we tried to replicate a bit with the shift we did last year with technology and library at Essex Elementary, is that roughly, and I say roughly because sometimes it's an under and rounded up, and sometimes it's an over and round down. It's a roughly 60/40 split for a full-time FTE to cover a once-a-week special in both buildings. So, what we've tried to do is do some reductions at Memorial because their enrollment's gone down. So, currently, Memorial's carrying a 1.0 FTE dedicated to library. We know from the course schedule that what is really needed is a 60 percent FTE. So, the intent is to reduce Memorial to .6 and move .4 of that to the middle high school, which starts to go to work on their issue of needing to reinstate a librarian. And our goal is to transition over time to 1.0 elementary librarian and 1.0 middle high school librarian. So, there's no total, there's no loss of FTE. There's a shift in FTE. Elementary P E, we currently carry 2.3 FTE total between the two elementary schools. Memorial's going to reduce to 1.1. Essex will stay at .9, and .4 will go to the high school. That's going to be the complement to the A D position. 1.3 FTE total in art with .8 at Memorial, .5 at Essex. Those two positions are going to be combined into a 1.0, split 60/40, Memorial and Essex, with .4 going to the high school. Elementary music is basically going to stay the same. It's going to go from a 1.8 FTE to a 1.7. The extra .1 shifts to P E, and the intention is to have that individual cover kindergarten P E class. In the planning department, there's some discussion about implementing a strings program. So, it's a So, it's a well, it's a plan that's going to cost some money, so next year there'll be a planning group to look at what a multi-year implementation of a strings program would look like. Right now, we do instrumental lessons on the basic orchestra instruments. This would be in addition of violin and other string instruments. There's some pilot work going on through Parks and Rec, so there's a question of whether or not we should start to build out a program. We're looking at the depth switch program for that. So, that, we'll come to this group in form of a proposal, and we'll have some discussion as to whether we should proceed with that. And then, two other consolidations, we're taking, two tutors at the Memorial School who are currently doing reading. Tutorials are gonna be combined into one full-time special education liaison position. The thinking there is that tutors are, specifically do the tutorial component, and this will allow us to have someone be able to do push-in and cover some IEP needs and took a caseload. We are seeing an uptick in evaluations at the Memorial School, which is raising the number of IEPs. And then, the last one is, we are currently carrying one FTE that's split fifty-fifty between swing and sail at the middle school. The needs are pushing that position to be a 1.0 swing for next year. So, again, the theme programs stay relative, the student program stays the same. There are some things that probably won't, embellishments that we probably won't be able to address during the day, but the student program remains. It's a more effective use of existing FTE, but it also retains all of the current level of staffing. What it is going to require is people to move around and do things differently in different buildings, and that's hard.
So, what are the embellishments that, what do you mean by that? Like what are you not gonna have?
I know, like, this year, we, I know they're getting gearing up the book fair. We might need to use parent volunteer to do the book fair.
Don't parent volunteers run the book fair anyway?
I think librarians do quite a bit to help prep the school for that.
Okay.
I know there's time spent on prepping bulletin boards and doing things like that.
Yeah.
There may be a little less time, and maybe something that either isn't done to the same extent, is shifted to every classroom takes a bulletin board, things of that nature. Yeah.
Any comments?
And with Ken, I'm also a library geek, and I just wanna put my two cents in that in my dream world, we get back to having more librarians, not less librarians.
I'm gonna be pragmatic and say, it's very hard to justify 1.0 to 220 students.
I get it.
When you have an equivalent 1.0 to 600 students. So, I think we're always going to be battling having two relatively small elementary schools. I think we are lucky to remain with librarians. I know a lot of districts are going without. So, I think we also have to be.
But we've also heard from the community that that's very important, when we have approached that in the past. Like, that is, at least the elementary school, that's a very important role, when we've talked about that before.
I understand you're also, my job is also to make recommendations to you, and I could not recommend carrying a 1.0 FTE librarian for 220 students when we have middle school teachers carrying a load of 130 students with correcting and take home.
Can I ask something?
Those are the decisions that we're making at this point.
I have an overall question. We're looking at library, art, music, and we're looking at about, you know, one and a half FTE. Why does Jim have almost?
They meet two times a week.
Okay. I should remember that, I'm sorry.
So, one way to get at it, the next move might be to roll back to one time a week. We're looking at six hundred thousand dollars in budget cuts.
Relative to this entire discussion, you know, we have this interest on the capital that, you know, we had a discussion in collaboration where Town of Manchester was very clear about what they thought we should be doing with that money, but ultimately, there's a decision that we make about how our money is spent. And I just wonder, have you considered that in terms of, you know, I'm worried about this budget, and I'm worried about the volatility there. Have you looked at that interest any further, or, I just don't think we should take that off the plate.
You're talking about the interest from the bonds.
Yeah. You know, we had a conversation in collaboration where Manchester said, we really wrote you to take that and use it only for capital.
Capital, not operating.
But I think, you know, if you're gonna come to taxpayers at some point for correction, and you've got dollars that you could be using, I just.
Dollars a dollar.
Right.
But it's not a recurring dollar.
I know.
And it's gonna decline over time. But we're probably going to be tapping our reserves to manage some of these things, and we still need to put money away for a field replacement. So, I would argue that we should put the money, the capital money away for the capital investments, that we're gonna be up against it to pay for that within the next three years.
Okay.
And that's gonna be five hundred thousand dollars.
I'm just saying that it's there, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna limit ourselves to, I don't wanna go back to taxpayers and ask them for more money if there's interest money that we could use to.
Well, one thought on that, I don't wanna jump into a rabbit hole with both feet, but I will. One thought is, you know, we have this capital hanging over our head, these capital needs, meaning the fields. We might have some flexibility there to be able to source some other funds, like corporate sponsorships.
Sure.
Which could alleviate the need to use the interest money there, and maybe we could put it into, you know, operational budget. So, just a thought. I mean, we may have some flexibility, we may not.
You might have to start going back to looking at reserves to, we can't keep.
We don't, we're already there.
We're already there.
Interest would be just a temporary form of reserves that are going to push us into using more reserves later on.
Right.
I mean, I think we have to look at the structural realities of the budget. I think what we have on this page actually makes good efficiency sense.
I don't think anyone's arguing that.
And it's maximizing that. I think the other pieces are going to, the piece we did before about potential out-of-district placements, we have to wait and see what materializes, and then make some concrete decision based on what's reality. We're laying out the worst-case scenario, because we don't wanna roll into June and say, oh, my gosh, by the way, six hundred thousand dollars, we're cutting, we're pink slipping everybody, June 15th, because we don't know how we're gonna get there. We're just kinda giving you a heads-up and letting you know that we think we have a way to manage the impact this year, but we are hitting that point in FY21. So, it's either gonna be large doses of reserves, not to grow, just to stay afloat.
Yeah.
I hope we can get a corporate sponsorship for the field, but, I mean, you saw the high school report. We shifted a lot of resources from the high school to the elementaries when they were having an enrollment issue. We have, and now we're in the, we need to be quitting them and cycling them back, but we're losing them instead of cycling them back. I mean, you know, we're losing some retiree positions this year, which should've been positions that came up to the high school, but we're trying to close the initial gap that existed, so.
This feels four years into, or five years into since there was an override that you can save and save and save, and the district has demonstrated fiscal responsibility in terms of managing budget for at least the past three years that I've put on the committee, that I've seen it firsthand, and I'm sure it extends beyond that, that at some point in time it gets to, preserves are down, nothing's down, okay, how do we reset?
You know, I think we've talked about that. I think we've talked about the reality. It's more philosophical conversation, neither here nor there right now. But, so do you need a vote on this, or?
This is an FYI, it's all an FYI.
Okay.
Just so you're aware. I mean, obviously, you know, we have people here tonight, this impacts a lot of people and what their daily life is gonna look like. The positive thing is it retains the FTE, it just gets shuffled around.
Okay.
Which could go back up when we build Memorial. I mean, when we, I mean, those.
Well, my notes in the out years are, I think we should start looking at this in terms of enrollment and matching appropriate FTE with enrollment size. So, when.
If they grow, I'm just saying.
If they were at four hundred and fifty, we wouldn't wanna raise that up to point-eight-five or point-nine, whatever the things might be.
Right, yeah. What?
Enrollment costs money.
Yeah, so, but it's gonna be going, we need to just be looking to the future, because it's gonna be coming, right? In two years.
We think.
Before I move it and open to public comment, does anybody else have any? So, we have a little bit of a structure. If you would just stand, introduce yourselves, say where you're from, which we know anyway, but for the camera, that'd be great.
We can keep the camera out of that anyway.
Trust me, I'm with you.
All right, I'm Susan Hardy, I'm the library teacher over at Essex. I had two questions in the previous slide, Avi. You said, we're anticipating three residential placements. Do we have any residential placements currently?
I would, I don't have that information at my fingertips. I don't know if we do, but if we do, they're very limited, and we may have none, I don't know. I just, I have a long list of them, and to be honest, I focus a little less and memorize a little less about that, but I could look into that.
And then, my other question is to the.
I believe we may have one or two, but I'm not positive.
Okay. My other question to the school committee is, have we evaluated the efficacy of the foreign language program at the elementary level? We had originally, at one point, we had it being taught twice a week for the fifth grade. Now, it's down to once a week, goes down to first grade. Is it proving to be a beneficial use of taxpayers' dollars?
That's a really good question. I know we've talked about that in the past, and I think, gosh, maybe, what was it, maybe dating myself, but four or five years ago, we talked about possibly pulling the foreign language. The hue and cry was, oh, gosh, you thought we were taking off limbs. So, I think, Pam, correct me if I'm wrong. I think that was the idea, to keep it once a week. So, you know, that's a good question. I'm gonna look to Pam on that. So, does it make sense, if we're only gonna do it once a week, does it have enough of a bang for the buck?
I think all the specials are exposure to different things. So, if we wanna measure them for outcomes, I would say we should measure all, identify what our outcomes are, and then measure them all, much like the exploratories at the middle school. They're an opportunity for kids to test and explore different components. I don't think we're necessarily hitting benchmarks in student achievement goals with our foreign language program.
So, to that point, if you look at all the specials in elementary school, foreign language is the only one that becomes a core, right? A core class in middle and high school. Maybe that's worth some investigating. Thank you, Susan.
I think my position at the time, if I recall, was I would not eliminate the special. I would look to make it more, if you want, if you feel like foreign language isn't the best use of it, you might wanna do something around STEM, engineering, or something creative. Because the other piece is that the specials provide the prep periods for the teachers. So, if you start eliminating slots in the, a lot of this is just schedules and numbers when you get down to it. If you eliminate an opportunity for specials, you're going to have to double up something else to maintain the same number of prep blocks. So, you could eliminate foreign language, but you might need to make art or music two times a week.
Okay.
Or, you just reduce prep time.
Okay.
Which could be an option if we're in, we have, we're over contract on prep time, so you could get into a position where if the budget is bad enough, that is not a place I would want to go, but if we're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars, those are the things that get put on the table for consideration.
All right.
Samantha. Hi, I'm Samantha Sillett. I'm the library and music teacher at Memorial School, and my first question is, this chart somewhere online that we can access it?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay. So, then, based on that, I'm gonna just shoot out my questions. The first one being library, 2020, point-four, point-six Memorial, I get the TA, middle high school?
Yeah.
And then, point-four, middle high school. Can you explain at this point, kind of what the vision is there for the TA, and then a point-four MHS librarian?
The TA is here at the middle high school all week for drop-ins from learning commons, and I think the split would be two days, middle high school, three days, memorial school. Or you could do partial days. I mean, I think that's up for debate.
So, is the TA is here full-time, though?
Mm-hmm.
So, there would be two people here in the library?
Got it.
Okay. And then.
Because they use library as a drop, it's a drop-in.
Right. And then PE, I get elementary art, I understand, elementary music, 2020, planning for strings proposal, and then, so that's a question, what does that mean? And then, point-one, partial FTE assigned on Memorial to cover PE coverage.
So, when we did the numbers, right now, you have a point-eight at Memorial for music. It's just under point-eight, so it comes out in at about point-seven, when you take her, when you take the choral responsibilities, and put them with the general music responsibilities. So, the thinking was, like we did some years ago, the point-one overage for PE would be covered by the music teacher for kindergarten.
Okay, so what does the planning for strings proposal mean?
I think it's optimistic, given the other parts of our discussion tonight. There's been a long-term discussion as to whether or not we expand the musical offerings for students to include string instruments.
So, it'd be an ideal goal.
Yeah, so like, you know how Richard does the lessons? We incorporate different string instruments into that.
Right, okay.
Again, the other conversation is probably going to make that a twenty-five, six, seven, eight option.
Right. And then, the last question is, where is technology? It's a special in the elementary schools.
Oh, we just held that the same as it is this year. No change, status quo.
For 2020, 2021, and 2022?
Trying to be respectful of how everything is moving, and I think, when and if we go to the 1.0 librarian, 1.0 librarian, upper or lower, we may wanna look at how we're dividing that time as well.
Okay.
Because right now, it's kind of a patch together. I would assume that would probably go to a sixty-forty at that point, depending on what enrollment does. And all of those in the out years, Samantha, to your point, I think are conditional on enrollment. If Caroline's comment, if we get a surge and we're back up at four hundred kids, then we've gotta push the FTE.
I'm starting at four sixty-five, and now I'm at whatever. And you just made me think of one other thing, you know, transition to LA. So, in 2021, at this point, it would look like elementary would be one person split between the two, and then you would bring in somebody, or maybe perhaps somebody's already here in the building that could take on that role.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Yep. I guess it's just we're saying, the goal isn't the program, the goal is just maximizing, right-sizing the FTE with our current enrollment, and trying to preserve as much program as possible, and then as we rebuild enrollment and rebuild finances, then we have the opportunities to do expansions.
Claudette Yatkins. I just remembered another question I had, so I'm gonna follow up again when she's done.
Hi, I'm Claudette Yatkins. I teach art at the Memorial School, and I am here asking also for my colleague Tina Doherty, who's the art teacher at Essex, and we were both wondering, what is it that you have in mind for each of us? Because it looks, it says split, shared, and I don't, is that split or shared, or?
It's a, so, yep, the 1.3 will combine into a 1.0 elementary art. Well, actually, everything's K-12, so it would be a 1.0 split between Memorial and Essex, but one person, one FTE, and then a point-four assignment at the middle high school, part-time at the high school.
So, you have one person going between.
Full-time position split between. Yep, no, it's fine. I can't.
No, honey.
My neck is so annoying. It's a full-time person split between Essex and Memorial.
Yes.
And then, a part-time person assigned to the high school. I didn't go into this piece of the scheduling. It's probably worth mentioning that the high school has a drop waterfall schedule, so periods don't ever align. So, what we can achieve with the library, where you can break it out on a day's schedule, you can't achieve a dedicated day of the week, or even time of the day for the high school, because your first, your typical first-period class will meet first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and seventh in a different position all along the six-day rotation. So, that kind of makes it impossible to split staff between two places. So, the better split is between Memorial and Essex, because you can just do three, two, three days in one spot, two days in another. And then, the point-four person, the burden there is that they would have a schedule that moves around quite a bit.
So, I'm sorry, between the two, and then is that same part, actually, you have one person that's going between both of those, and then the person, the middle school, is that same person then coming here, too, or is that a different person?
Different person.
That's a totally different person.
Yep. A 1.0 person and a point-four person. The point-four person's schedule will rotate.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, the principals did make a good effort of trying to see if there was any way, and I hear that we tried this once in the past, and it was not successful. The six-day rotating drop, one of the lines of thinking was, could we create an overlay of the six-day rotating drop of specials that sat over the elementary? overlay of the six-day rotating drop of specials that sat over the elementary schedule and allowed all of the specials to kinda platoon and move throughout the district? And that got shot, we looked at it, but it got shot down because it's an impossible, impossibility for the classroom teacher, because they would never know when art was, it would change every week, every six, every six-day rotation. So if that made any, you get it.
Yeah.
Pam, isn't there one, there is one period, if I'm not getting my schools, middle and high school confused.
Yeah, you get that.
If there is one period that stays, one class that stays the same throughout the day, like the C is always the same time every day. Does that change your school?
That's the me block and the you block.
Me block, me block.
Yeah, changed with the new schedule.
No, there's one other, maybe it's just middle school.
It's to, it's to facilitate music between the two buildings.
Okay, well, couldn't that be one of the specials, like in art, and then somebody could come over, it'd be the same time every day.
Not the high school.
Okay, I am, I am getting my school's.
We can't even share staff between the middle and the high school at the moment, because it doesn't align.
All right, I'm sorry, Samantha.
No, it's okay, there's transportation time too.
Yeah.
People who are split. It was just the question that I first asked was, is this accessible online now? And you said not yet.
I'll send it to you guys.
Thank you.
It's no secret.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So let me ask another question.
Yep.
Is there no more sale program at the middle school for next year?
No, it's sale, they just had an extra teacher.